All right, well, the we'll just call to order the Tuesday, May 17th, 2022. It's 4:00 p.m. St. Cloud Metropolitan Transit Commission has called to order. I'll let the record reflect that everyone is here with the exception of Sartell and Wake Park. And we have, are there first of all, any additions to the agenda or changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that Gary has consented to the agenda items five through eight.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, open forum, is there anyone here in the public, either here or do you have online folks at all?
We got Debbie listener, and that's about it.
Oh, that's good. All right, well, then, there's anyone, no one is here, so we will close down the open forum and move on to general business. Item nine, consideration of the 2022-23 SESU and Joint Powers Agreements. David?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So similar to last year, we are requesting to enter into a contract with St. Cloud State. I think you could probably maybe just do them both at the same time. They're very similar, the only difference is the that we don't have a part of the contract with St. Cloud State to utilize any space. So in the St. Cloud State contract, we always add the portion that explains that we can use the space down at the Husky Hub and the lot for our local rodeo. So same as last year, continuing the 90 cents a ride, they'll be billed monthly. Yeah, very, very, no changes from last year in either contract, so.
742 similar?
Yes, correct. The only difference with that one is they have a different start date because of the difference in the school years.
Okay. Well, since we have both of those items, nine and 10, if there's a motion to approve both contracts as presented?
Second.
Okay, is there anybody else? All right, any team discussion? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, items number nine and 10, the contract or Joint Powers Agreement with both St. Cloud State University and District 742. Item 11, Connects Pilot Service Update.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. As part of the discussion, I believe we had back in, I would say, well, late last year, the request was that we would continue to bring forward updates on the Connect service for evaluation through the end of the year as to whether this would continue to be a pilot, we would go back to a different service, or whether this would move into a permanent offering as part of our service. And so what you have in front of you is numbers, the green line represents ridership on the Connect service, the red line represents ridership on the previous 32. What we've been doing is we've been using averages, and so we take three Januaries and we use those numbers, three Januaries, we use those numbers. We're further, further along in the Connects now that we have quite a bit of data to be able to use. And so as a month comes through, then instead of having three Januaries, we may have four Januaries or whatever it is. The part that I, that I do want to emphasize is that we have made some, some pretty significant changes along with when we implemented the Connects where we no longer have, you don't have to make transfers to go into Walmart. There were some significant changes, and so these numbers are never going to be an apples-to-apples comparison. And so we've made our best guess, and what we've done with these Connects numbers is we've used just a, what we consider to be a very conservative estimate of what we are losing transfer-wise for not having to make that connection anymore. And so we've, we've adjusted those numbers for that. But again, we're, we're never going to get an apples-to-apples comparison. And so I think that using that conservative number, these numbers, that's the hard part, is that we really, we would love to be able to represent what this actually looks like, but the problem is we just knew going into this that we would never be able to capture what the, what those numbers were. And so I just always want to give that disclaimer because these numbers are probably a lot closer compared to what we've added in versus what they look like. And so draw your own conclusions, make your, your own, your own minds up and what you see on it. But again, I just always want to be clear about that, that we really will never be able to bring forward an apples-to-apples comparison. So any questions on anything that you're seeing, any?
Can you calculate what reverting, reverting back to the old system, what it would cost compared to what the new system's costing?
We did, we did have that number initially, and I guess we could look at it for what it's, what it would be costing now. But if I remember correctly, the local share, the difference was about $8,000 for the local share.
But I mean, I'm talking the whole cost of this, not just local share, but I'm talking Metro Bus. What, is it gonna, does it cost a tremendous amount more to run that service than the regular service?
It was, the Route 32 cost about, back then, when we pulled the numbers, about $40,000 less to run the Route 32 than it is to run the Connect service.
Okay.
And then that, yeah, that local share was about $8,000.
I don't believe that that included fares, the offset of fares, because at that time we were charging the same amount, we're charging more for Connects.
Right.
I don't believe that that factored in fares.
It'd be nice, if we're going to go to the end of the year of this study, I think it'd be nice to have something like that. What, what's it actually, dollars and cents, what's it going to cost to do that?
Sure. To continue this versus revert back.
Or being fiscally responsive to do it though.
Sure, sure.
And Mr. Chair, that's going to be my question too at the end of the year, is how much do they cost us over and above, I mean, what's that Connect costing us? If it's $50,000 a year and we've got 1,500 riders a month? And how does that, how does that compare? It seems to me it's kind of expensive service, in my opinion. I've kind of been on the fence all along on that.
This would be a good time for you to make a motion to have Sartell just increase their share of the property. Cover that circle.
Absolutely.
Kidding.
Don't put that in the minutes yet.
But we'll, we'll continue throughout the year to bring forward updates and then bring back.
Because we did have that fare, we did increase the fare though two years ago.
But then we did.
But then COVID hit.
Exactly.
Yeah, probably have a, let it go beyond, you know, one of those, let it go beyond so you get a better non-COVID year, but you're in that now, I'm assuming you're closer to that anyway.
Right.
But you still have lots of people that work from home, you still have less, you know.
If, if, if there was ever going to be an equation where something had everything thrown at it, certainly this, for sure.
No, it sounds good. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we move on to item 12, software project update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I just wanted to kind of give you an update on our software project. This has been, I think, the world's longest project ongoing. We received funding back in 2017 for a software ERP system. At that time, we had attempted to get an all-inclusive ERP system, we ended up not being able to get that, so we broke out the, the projects kind of in two phases. The first one was what we refer to as FX Boardbuster, which is kind of an operation software. And then the second piece of that, we had broken out and selected back in 2018, a software called Avail, and that was supposed to cover our GL, POs, requisitions, capital assets, and then inventory for maintenance, kind of all of them, maintenance job costing. And then in addition, it was supposed to, and I stress that, also include HR and payroll. And after, again, we entered into that contract back in early 2018, and still we do not have an HR or payroll module that's usable at this point. So after lots of delays and lots of frustration on Metro Bus's behalf, we have decided that we are going to no longer go through Avail for those two modules, we've decided to go for an HR and payroll separate software that can then import, export into Avail for the general ledger piece of that. So we went out for an RFP a couple of months ago, got some really good options back, and we are going to be moving forward with our software called Paycom. We're still kind of working out the finer details of that, but that's kind of our plan moving forward, is that we're going to do our HR and payroll software through Paycom. We do anticipate having some additional capital funds available, so Paycom focuses more, there's a small upfront cost, and then it's going to be more operating, they charge more per payroll than the Avail solution had, you know, that option had given us. So we anticipate a little bit higher operating cost, but then we do still have quite a bit of funding left available, so we're going to be taking a look at perhaps an app, software, or some other solutions that we can utilize that capital funding with, keeping in mind that again, it's 2017 funding, so we have to continue to spend it down sooner rather than later. So probably in the next few months, be coming forward with some additional ideas on that. But we're excited about the Paycom solution, there's going to be an onboarding piece, an employee portal piece, and then payroll processing, so expect lots of efficiencies and better security within the system, so we're looking forward to that.
Questions?
Okay, good. Sort of like ADP is, when they, when you get into those systems, they charge a little bit for everything that they do, is that the same, same type of thing?
So the way this one works is essentially yes, but they charge per employee per payroll and then there's, so there's like a base fee and then a per employee fee on top of it. ADP was actually one of the, the softwares that we did a demo with, and they charge for more things like, you know, 30 cents for this and six cents for that, reports for this, and this isn't quite like that, it's more like, it's literally by employee. So if we've got 148 employees on one payroll run, we get charged for that, and if we have 160 employees in the next payroll run, we get charged for that.
Is the system designed already that you're just, it's plug-and-play, or is they going to make a system for you?
It's plug-and-play. There's a lot of customization, a lot of customizations within it that it's already built in, so it's, the reporting module, I think all of us kind of drooled at, it was pretty exciting, so a lot of really good features that it has, and it's a plug-and-play system.
Good. I think we all learned from the state of Minnesota with the driver's license thing, they made a system that doesn't, doesn't work, to buy something that works.
That's actually what we were dealing with when we selected Avail, they told us, yep, we can do that, yep, we can do that, yep, we can do that, and they couldn't, right? That was all not factual statements, and so then they got to, well, we're going to customize it, we're going to customize it, well, five years down the road, and we still haven't, not five, four, four years down the road.
It'll be fine.
It feels like it. Still nothing, so.
That word custom is expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Chair, a question. Paula, on the Avail, so we're going to use the general ledger, you said?
Yep.
That, that system is plug-and-play?
That's been up and running, yep, we've been using Avail since October of 2019.
Okay.
For the GL.
Do we have any losses of money that we couldn't recoup from them not coming through the contract on the other side?
We're negotiating that right now.
Wagon prices.
Yeah. And I'll just say, we are not on the same page.
Okay. I'd be more than happy to meet with them. No, no.
Hi.
What's that for?
Yeah, we, we are not on the same page, so I don't know where that's going to land, but.
Okay. How tied to you are their general ledger system?
Not, have not.
Okay.
Not that we want to have to suffer through another, another conversion, but it's, we're not, we're not locked into anything.
Okay.
All right, move on then to operations update.
Good afternoon again. So I have put, I put together an update for the, for everyone, for our fiscal year operations update, so just a little tidbit of information from last year compared to the previous year. So ridership numbers, fiscal year '21 compared to '20, obviously are, are interesting with, with some of the lasting effects of COVID, but our dialeride pair transit is up 2%, our fixed route is only down 29%, and our North Star link is down 66%. I would say compared to that to the nation overall, we're still well ahead of the game compared to what some have experienced. Looking at, comparing 2021 to 2022 so far, overall ridership is up about 7%, and so probably some decreases here, but overall, we're, we're looking good in 2022, so.
Up, up from '21?
Up from '21, yep.
Oh, is it compared to '20 or to '19?
We don't want to talk about that. '19 was, '19 was an outstanding year, we were, we were on track to have a big year, and, and we did have a big year in '19, but in 2020, when 2020 started, we were on track to have just as good a year as '19, and then everything happened and fell apart. And, yeah, and so there's certainly been some conversation with Metro Transit about this North Star link number, because I'm not as, as worried about the fixed route number as I am about the North Star link number, and so there's definitely some varying opinions on why that is the way it is, and I certainly will leave my opinions at the door, but, you know, we're still operating in a, in a significantly reduced capacity, and, you know, I just wonder, are we, whereas before, we had a significant amount of ridership going there, now we don't have as many options back, and are we missing some, some there, as well as are we missing some, some opportunities? And so we've had some conversations with Metro Transit that, we'll see what happens, so.
Dave, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is the North Star link coming back at all?
As far as the ridership?
Ridership?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're continuing to rebound.
Oh, okay.
I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say it's great, it's nothing compared to the 3,000, 3,500 riders we had previously, but we are seeing some decent.
So you're seeing improvement across all three then?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and again, I mean, I, I guess I wonder, will we ever know what could have been if we, if we're sitting where we're at? So, yeah, it's to be seen what will happen with that. We replaced nine small buses, and so we're, we're continuing on in that adventure. I think one of you had some questions about what we're seeing with, with supply chain and, and the demand and that, was it Kirk that had some questions?
No, 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 not on that. I was talking about the CNG stuff.
What's that?
I was talking CNG.
Oh, sure, sure.
But yeah, but you're not, you're not seeing supply issues with the buses?
Uh, we are.
We are, okay.
We've got, we've got five in the, in the pipeline right now, we don't have production dates, we've got three that are, we're waiting on contracts for, and so our hope is that in this coming year, we'll get that all worked out, but we'll see what happens, so. Preventable accidents, we still continue to go down in that category, we had a 56% decrease over the last five years, as you can see fiscal year '21 was our, was our best year, so we're continuing to, to decrease in that area, which is always good in a, in a transportation organization, obviously. We replaced some shelter lights, so we, across our fleet, we had old outdated lights that were consuming a ton of electricity, so we were able to decrease size and get them all up and running. We've got one or two that are, that are left that there's nothing we're going to be able to do with because the, the business will not allow us access to the electrical panel. And so it is what it is, and, but we're, we're sitting good there, so updated lights for our customers. On-time performance still continues to be one of our, our best areas. Overall, we're, we're 99%, and this is, this continues, we've had one month that we're at 98%. The, the state says that the lowest you can be is 95%, and we're not even close to that. So we had one month, we were at, like I said, we were at 98%, and we all started to worry and thought, oh, gosh, we want to, we've had 99%, so we want to continue with that. And that, that's based on passengers. When we put together this number, if, if we have a route to Slade or we have a, a dialeride passenger, that, that is unique passengers that we're counting, how many people were affected by us being late, and so 99% of our passengers make it to their destination on time. We did a hoist replacement in the, in the shop, that was completed in February of 2022. That's kind of been a long, net-needed, needed project back there for those guys to be able to keep the buses up and running. Inventory accuracy, we continue to increase in that area, certainly we still have a little bit of room for improvement, but we're getting there, so this was our highest year since 2012, so we continue to, to increase in that area, so probably those guys back there. We've changed over our generator and our electrical panel update, and we're hoping that should be done here in the next week or so. We've had some delays because of parts, so that continues to be a challenge with getting parts and things like that. So that will allow, rather than just certain areas of our building to be run off the generator, that will allow our entire building to now be run off the generator in the event of a power outage. Customer service complaints continues to decrease, we're at 32%, and so what that means is that one of, one of every complaint we receive is substantiated, two-thirds aren't, so we're, we're doing really well in that area. It's unbelievable the amount of complaints that we get that people forget we have audio and video, so it certainly helps us out in that area. We're still working towards finding a plot of land for us to build the Western Transit hub, and so that is still in process. We've got some, some plots of land that are kind of our, our frontrunners designated, but we're working through the process with FDA, so we continue to work on that. Can't really say a whole lot on that with the rules, but we're certainly continuing to work through that process, so. I forgot what I had back there.
Jeez.
Oh, the mask mandate, that's right. We no longer have the mask mandate, so just an update on that, that, that was discontinued and, and we no longer require masks on the buses. So 2020 goals, continue to work on our preventable accidents, I mean, that's always a goal that we have. We have to report to MINDOT, set goals with MINDOT, so we want to continue to make sure that where we are able to, we continue to, to not bash up our resources and keep everything in good working condition. Continue to maintain our, our high on-time performance rate, that's certainly important for our customers. We want to continue to improve that accuracy in our inventory area and complete our monthly PMs on time. We just completed our triennial May 12th, and the maintenance department scored perfect in the, the selection of, of samples that they requested for buses, and so we're continuing to, to make sure that all of our PMs are done on time. We want to really work on reducing our customer call hold time, that's an area that we haven't always been great in, because what do you want to do, you want to cut the customer off, but we also recognize that we've got other customers that need to get their calls, and so we're, we're kind of trying to focus on keeping those conversations as short as we can while maintaining that customer service and helping our customers. So we want to continue to reduce our customer service complaints, you know, we'd like to see that 25%, one-fourth of our, our complaints substantiated, but 30, 32% is very reasonable and is very good. If I had, but if I factored in our, our compliments that we received too, that would, that would certainly, I would lower that number as part of the equation. So as I spoke to, we've got eight small buses in the pipeline, five have been ordered, three we're just waiting for a contract, we've got three large buses that we've already got funding in place to order, and we're still waiting on a contract for that as well, that should be done shortly. We're going to look at updating our long-range transit plan to include some efficiencies and moving in and out of the Western Transit hub, wherever that's going to end up being located. As Ryan alluded to, we're kind of looking at some options, or I think Paula did too, about for our pair transit service to get an app and to make some improvements on our pair transit service software. It's not the greatest, so we're, we're looking for some improvements in that area as well. And then once we get this land figured out, we're going to be gearing up to, to put a building on it, so that will, we're hoping that that will come sometime next year, we'll be able to start that, so.
Any other questions, any questions in the room? You know, not a question, but on that, I don't know, maybe it's a, a use of the term, but the complaint piece, is there a way to, I mean, more in the area of customer satisfaction?
Sure.
Complaint comes as a negative, and that seems really high to me when you have a 32, even though it's like, especially if you're looking at, if, as a, if I was a complainant, I'd look at that as a negative, but more satisfaction, more like a, you know, customer satisfaction.
Sure.
And if that's in the, you know, if that's in the 80 or above, then you're sitting pretty good, which, you know, it's, it's just a different way of looking at it.
Sure.
Coming, coming from a positive rather than negative, because you're always going to get people at complaints, and, and I'm a little disappointed you're not at 100% on time, 99%. Just a little low. Can't get over the half chat.
St. Cloud.
I could say that. But yes, and that's just an observation, because we do customers, you know, city level customer satisfaction, they're usually really high, but if you get a number that's on the other direction, even any little increase in it really sounds bad, but it's, but if you're coming down a little bit from 100, it's not, just a suggestion.
Sure.
Especially from a public data piece. Any other questions or?
I have one, Mr. Chair. Derek, I don't know if you keep track of this, but do you know how many miles the roads are per year, with all the, with all the buses out there? Any idea how many miles?
We certainly have that number, I can get to that.
It's not important, I just, I just thought, how many miles you guys put on these buses?
I can, I can tell you that before the reductions for COVID, in a, in a normal world, we put on 100,000 miles every 3.75 weeks, so.
Okay.
Overall fleet or for buses?
Yes, for all fleet, yeah.
Okay. As dialeride, entirely?
Everything included, yeah.
How many 100,000 every 3.75?
Every 3.75 weeks, so whatever that equates to.
1.3 million. There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
Obviously with the COVID reductions, that would be less at this point, about a, about a 20% less.
Are we looking, obviously went through huge investment with CNG, and CNG is, is good, but are we looking long-term with, you know, future fleet replacement to electric or hydrogen? We're actually going to be developing hydrogen here in St. Cloud at our wastewater plant in the next few years, actually creating hydrogen and CNG, or not CNG, but GNG, green natural gas that we can create, in fact, we're just starting that, that process, but as you look long-term, I mean, obviously the bonds are paid off for the, or so.
We're paying close to $8 million to.
Right, yeah.
Get up and running in the city.
But as you, you know, as, as you, as the country switches more to renewable, it's just, and, you know, even manufacturers are going to be at some point not be manufacturing non-renewables at some point, I mean, that'll probably be the direction.
With the CNG, we fall into the renewable classifications for grants and for recording purposes.
So far.
That's true, so.
Yeah, I just don't, I just see carbon, I mean, the carbon part's going to probably, it depends on, you know, federal policy, but you're going to probably see more and more grants for, for renewable rather than clean. I mean, there's still, and I think the direction was the right direction to go, but at some point, manufacturers are going to shift.
I know, and I don't mean to speak, but I know that there's a different transit system in the state of Minnesota that went with the electric, and the cold weather does not work well with the electric, and so they ended up having to put in portable heaters in the buses because the bus couldn't keep up, tell me if I'm misspeaking, but the bus couldn't keep up with, with the, the electric and also be able to heat the bus, so it, like, it, it doesn't work in the cold climate yet. I'm not saying that it's not going to, but as of right now, the technology isn't there, so we don't anticipate changing over to electric anytime in the near future until we, we kind of internally decided we're going to let other transit systems work out the bugs, and then we'll maybe take a look at that again.
Yeah, I just think, and I agree with you, right now, electric's not, but I mean, there's even, I mean, there you got some manufacturers now that are looking at going, even reverting back to a hybrid where you could use some of that type of fuel that's still renewable, but I just think there's going to be a huge acceleration of technology change with, you know, especially Germany's going to leave, I mean, they're going to have to completely get off of natural gas, and once that takes place, they're going to have to figure out, so that technology, we just, in fact, I know we, a couple of weeks ago, we just, in fact, it would benefit all the serious cities, well, because of wastewater, but. they're going to have to figure out, so that technology, we just, in fact, I know we, a couple of weeks ago, we just, in fact, it would benefit all the serious cities, well, because they're wastewater. But we're going to be one of the first places to produce hydrogen here in the world for a wastewater plant anyway. And if we can do that, our plan, you're going to see, I mean, you're going to see, you're going to see a lot of places do that. And you can do, I mean, I've seen hybrids where you can do something, whether it's either hydrogen or green natural gas and electricity. So when electricity doesn't work, it's still a clean, like burning fuel and New Flyer. I get it. At some point, they're going to probably be regulated out of manuf, I mean, the automobile industry is regulated out of manufacturing by 2050. So I would assume buses and trucks, I mean, we're looking at our fleet, we don't have any CNG or anything in our fleet, but we can't order, you know, it takes two years to get a fire truck or to get a plow. So if we're waiting two years, maybe we should look at technology. I mean, I know even, this is still very green technology. I'm just trying to think of long-term if there's a way to
Much cleaner and
be looking at, because it's, I think your acceleration to, and I just met with Excel, maybe that's why, because Excel has to 2050 to be completely carbon neutral by 2050, everything they do. So that'll be a huge change.
Sheriff, I may, I know right now Metro Bus, we are slotted for twenty-three bus replacement scheduled for 2026, 2025?
MINDOT just pushed that back to 2027.
Oh, okay.
So yes, if you're looking at 2027, that's, that's five years. That's a lifetime of
Yeah. So we could definitely take it back to the team and then look at the options. But I know definitely, to Paula, to Paula's point, the electric, I know you and I looked at some electric buses, maybe we're down at the, we met with New Flyer actually at the expo. And a lot of systems are going electric, but in Minnesota, just talking with the other transit systems in Minnesota, the electric buses, a lot of systems are shying away from it just because of the winter weather operations, like the transit, the system that Paula mentioned, you know, I'm not going to say the names, but they actually had six buses and they actually had to pull them off the street. And I think for about, you know, ninety percent duration of during the winter months, they actually didn't even run the buses because they had to
Another fifteen or sixteen-year-old buses because the brand ones didn't work.
Yeah, they had to use the diesel buses. These buses are like sixteen, fifteen, almost twenty years old. They had to put those buses back in the street because the electric buses that they had, they weren't equipped to handle Minnesota winters.
No, I, I don't disagree. The fact that at some point, though, their test run there is going to get better. And you know, and you're going to have more, better storage or whatever it may be in cold weather.
I mean, right, definitely. I mean, five years from now, you know, definitely, things are going to change. I mean, as buses become more agile and as parts become readily available and they have more technology, then the electric buses would be able to handle a Minnesota winter. The only thing is, you know, since you're on the topic, you know, this is going to be a high dollar amount. You know, we're looking at, you know, electric bus costs upwards of a million dollars for one bus. So if we need twenty-three buses, or I mean, we have forty, we have eighty buses. So now we're looking, I mean, obviously we're phasing in over time, but just the dollar amount would be significant. I mean, we'll probably get grants from the FDA and from the state grants to kind of offset some of that. But we might, I don't want to speak for the feds, but I'm pretty sure we might have to come out of pocket, local share might have to be increased to kind of like offset the cost of the buses, the grants that we receive. So I don't want to stay dollar amount, not knowing the numbers, but I just know that there will be some cost.
And the grants are, the grants for that type of fleet are still, any type of revenue fleet that we have, it's twenty percent local share. So right now, a CNG bus is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and an electric bus, not counting the charging stations, just the bus, is close to a million. So the local share is twenty percent, whether we're paying six hundred and twenty or a million. Now again, as Ryan said, maybe some grants might come in where we can get ten percent somewhere else, right? Or, and again, that's five years down the road. So we're not looking at that at this point, but that also has to be a factor, right? Especially when we're, that one year, we've got twenty-three large buses, and we've got thirteen or fifteen small buses slotted for replacement all in the same year. So we're planning for that, but we're not planning for it at a million dollars a bus, you know, there's, so we'll have to see where that is at that time.
No, I just think, I just have a feeling that's going to accelerate. And I, ten years ago, I would, I mean, I've sat in this room for a long time and would have never expected that by 2050, we'd be, you know, most manufacturers have to convert to electric nationwide. You know, and so if the private sector automobile industry is going to be there, I've got to assume there'll be federal requirements. And even requirements for some of that match to be in, you know, CNG's certainly way ahead in the carbon neutral part, but I'm just talking about the renewable part that's going to be, I think you're going to see an accelerated pressure on that, just because.
Hydrogen will be a great idea for us to look at.
Hydrogen, I mean, and I know there's experimentation with hydro, you know, hydrogen vehicles obviously have been around for a while, but
Few transit systems out west have hydrogen, especially in California, where they can't have diesel, period. And there's a couple of systems that have hydrogen buses.
Yeah, the land of ten thousand lakes where all you need is water to create hydrogen.
Eleven thousand lakes.
You have the ability to create water. But anyway, I just, I don't want you to mention that because I was just talking about some of the goals.
Well, we definitely look at it.
But we're looking at our fleet too. So I mean, if there's ways to, I mean, you can look, we have real heavy equipment too. And you know, I don't know of any snowplows yet that are electric, but we have to look long-term too and see.
Yeah, well, since MINDOT pushed us out to 2027, we'll definitely start the process maybe in 2025. And two years prior, to see what our options are, see what grants are available at that time. And then we can bring it back to the board. And then we can do like a cost analysis to see, you know, if you are going to go full electric, what that cost would be versus hydrogen versus CNG. And then we can make a decision at that time, then we can start the process from there. Because we will have to work our way back at least two years prior to the actual date that the actual buses will be due to be replaced.
How is the private sale of CNG? Is that signed up there a long time? It's the first time I think I've ever noted.
Oh, it's been up since, oh gosh, since they
They just never noticed it. Now I just maybe look at signs. Because two dollars instead of
Definitely pre-COVID, that sign has been
So we do public sales, both, you know, personal vehicles, and then we also partner with New Flyer because we've got a fast fill station. And so they've got a special key, if you will, that they come and fill their buses. And then we invoice them monthly for that as well, just to be able to get that. That fluctuates quite a bit. I don't want to give you a number exactly, but it's with the prices of gas right now, and ours is at two oh nine, we're seeing more and more, like we are seeing an increase in sales. Not enough to, you know, buy a million-dollar bus, but we'll
When you talk about that, a million dollars a bus, that's twenty-three million dollars plus the charging station. I don't even want to think what the charging station would cost at this place for that many buses. It's got, it would be huge. Is the infrastructure even here?
We'll have to convert.
Well, yeah, I don't know about what it takes to charge a bus, but you could charge a vehicle in your garage.
Yeah, we can have charging in the garage, but we just have to set up our garage, kind of how we did the conversion to CNG in our garage, that they have certain detection systems, certain, you know,
Less flammable.
I was at a presentation where we're with a local company that is looking at doing charging stations at gas stations. Because gas stations probably are going to be not as busy as they are now. But the infrastructure, Excel has to have the infrastructure in place, because you can't all of a sudden put in a whatever megawatt, whatever the station is, because the power may not be enough outside in the box. So there's upgrades that would have to be made out here to get that much power delivered here.
Yeah. I heard in a residential grid, in a neighborhood, you can only have three that access the power.
Really?
Yeah.
Excel has to meet that standard by 2050. So I mean, So they're going to be Twenty forty. Because they're going to have to meet the electric vehicle. That's part of the requirement they have, but I mean, they're working on it.
We'll see if it happens.
I mean, it's all exciting times, you know, just as technology changes and as, you know, buses become, as buses, as bus manufacturers are building different types of buses, and always good to be ahead of the latest and greatest, you know, trends out in the industry. So we'll definitely take a look to see what our options are at that time. And we'll just bring the numbers back to you. I know if we do electric, we have to have charging stations here, most likely a transit center, most likely a Western Transit Hub, and maybe some routes, maybe depending on
We're, St. Cloud, we're experimenting. In fact, this summer, we'll have the first charging stations that we operate that we collect money for. And we're looking at it as a revenue source, because we produce our own energy, so then we can sell that energy at charging stations. So we're going to be moving in that direction to have more of those available and then collect the energy.
And maybe we can get, you know, get free electricity from you guys. Kind of offset some of that cost.
My question is, are you working with Tesla? Is it going to be others? Because there's two different charging stations too.
I don't know the technology, but whether it's
Because evidently Tesla has their own charging stations.
I think you have, you have like some different, do you have different nozzles or something?
Different types of nozzles with Tesla versus like the Nissan, the BMWs.
Yeah.
Volkswagen is going to be big on it, but I know that they had a program that they'd have free charging stations across the country, but there's nothing on ninety-four. So you have to go to independent or something to charge yourself. I don't know if Tesla will work with them or not.
Yeah, well, it's a lot to, it's, but it's, I just, it's moving rapidly. My friends in Germany are, I mean, they got to change it all within the next year. Just get off of natural gas, or get off of gas. Or we'll be forced to get off of gas. We'll see. So, but thanks, that sounds, thanks for the update. Any other?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things, if I may. First, I'd like to reintroduce Paula to you officially. I know you've been seeing Paula behind the scenes. She never left, right?
You know, we haven't been in person very often, so.
We haven't been in person very often, but I know at one point, I did let you, you know, I did inform you that Paula has submitted her resignation. And then she was agreed to stay on Metro Bus as a, in a consulting capacity throughout the year while we seek a new replacement. And then we actually did hire a replacement, but then the replacement eventually, or subsequently submitted her resignation about eight months in because she saw another opportunity here in the area. So she decided to pursue public interest. And then we reached out to Paula again. Well, Paula's always been part of this, you know, consultant team behind the scenes. So Paula has graciously accepted to be rehired back to Metro Bus in her finance capacity again. So Paula is now our new Director of Finance. So no longer consultant. She is a Metro Bus employee now. So you'll be seeing Paula. So that's one to, you know, bring that to your attention.
Save money on lettering and nameplates.
Yeah, yeah, right, 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 right. You save money on consultant fees. So, yeah. Yeah, so really happy that Paula
You need to get a new one, though.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to work that. Yeah, talk to Kellen about that.
Oh, yeah, that's a good finance person that just goes right with the old stuff.
Yeah. But Metro Bus is really happy to have Paula, you know, rejoin us in an official Metro Bus capacity. And as I mentioned before, as Paula's a consultant, she's still, you know, was able to kind of, you know, help transition previous Director of Finance, you know, throughout the transition period. But now Paula has graciously accepted again. And we're happy, and that's just a great testament of the Metro Bus culture, the Metro Bus way, just the leadership, the employee morale that we have at Metro Bus. It's like one big happy family. It's like you leave and you just have to come back for more. So just really happy.
I think it's important to make sure you're all aware that it is for her an interim role in that capacity.
Yeah, I didn't, I was going to say that too. Yeah, yeah. I was saving that for last. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. I didn't know if you remembered that part. You were blissfully hoping that that piece would go away.
Explain as interim?
Yeah, so Paula is rejoining Metro Bus in an interim capacity. So basically, while we transition the next steps as far as seeking a permanent, full-time finance director, Paula is full-time interim right now until we transition, until we are able to find another finance person. We didn't want to just go right back out and just try to bring someone in. You know, we had triennials that were coming up. We had NTD reporting that was due. We have a lot of heavy ticket items that's life or death for Metro Bus. And I wanted someone who was familiar with the process, someone who could just jump in and just keep the process going. And Paula is that person that saved the day. So we had an NTD, and then in conjunction with Sonny and Dave, you know, they started a team process, the NTD, but we had an audit, which is all financial related. And then we just had a triennial, which was all hands on deck. But I wanted someone, and plus with all the CARES Act funding, all the additional influx of dollars that we received, there was a lot of reporting that was due as a result of that. And Paula was able to come in and just kind of like spearhead that process and just kind of keep things going in a positive direction. So yes, Paula is interim. While we get through all of these federal dollars and get through all of these federal audits and all these different things that are happening behind the scenes, and then we could kind of refocus again, maybe sometimes summer, late fall, and we could kind of transition someone in and then kind of bring that person on board. And then that way Paula's here, she could work with that person in person as that person gets up to speed on Metro Bus, Metro Bus life, financial life, that is.
Did she read the fine print in the bottom of the contract?
Subject to change?
You can order those million-dollar buses and have the next person figure out how to pay for them.
The fine print says, until death do us part.
We're ready at fifty-three here, so you know, that's another fifty-three more years, right?
And he said sorry, but he didn't say one year.
Exactly. That's up to us, isn't it?
Well, thank you for your willingness to do that. That's great.
And then the next thing I have, well, two more things, and then I know, wow, wow, we almost had an hour here. So
Yeah, well.
First time in like three years.
Rick's not just pushing us along normally.
Yeah, so on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, we had operator David Peacock. He's a dollar ride operator. He competed nationally at the Community Transportation Association of America. Their annual bus rodeo was held in Louisville, Kentucky, and David placed third amongst the operators from all over the United States. So David, unfortunately, is still celebrating right now, so he's not here to take a picture. So next month, we'll try to get him here at a next board meeting. We can take a picture and he could showcase the trophy. But we're real proud of David, proud of everybody that competed nationally, but I'm more happy for David because he is a Metro Bus employee. So he's the third safest operator here in the United States, and we're happy to have him here, working for Metro Bus. So congratulations to David. I know he's not online, but I'm pretty sure he'll be the minutes next month. Probably have something on an info screen to signify his winnings, but real happy that David, you know, went out there and competed and won. And well, came in third place. So he gets a check, he gets an undisclosed amount of cash, and then he gets the trophy.
Undisclosed.
I don't know who it is. I don't want to say it. But not from us, from the CTA, not from Metro Bus.
Is it tax-free or what?
Comes from CTA, not from Metro Bus.
He's still in Louisville. That's, you know, he should have taken, you know, one or two of us.
Yeah.
Three bourbon country.
Yeah, well, there you go. Actually, Sean Pierce, our operations manager, he actually went down to celebrate, to be part of the festivities down here at the rodeo.
That's cool.
Should I get him at another, at a future meeting?
Yeah, I'll bring him up at the next, if he's available to come in the June meeting, I'll have him here at the June meeting. So I can introduce him to the board. And the last thing I have, on December second, twenty twenty-one, Metro Bus received notification from the FDA that they are going to be conducting an annual review, a triennial review of our agency for the years twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one. So that review was completed on May twelve. We had an exit interview with the FDA, the reviewers, and the FDA team. And I'm happy to report, I'm happy to state that Metro Bus is in full compliance of the triennial. They focused on twenty, over twenty-plus review areas such as maintenance, procurement, financial controls, drug and alcohol, Title VI. And each one of the reviews, and Dave alluded to the maintenance piece in his operations update, but each one of the reviews, no deficiencies were found. So we're in a hundred percent compliance. So that's a great testament of the Metro Bus team. That's a great testament of our employees, day in and day out, working hard to, you know, keep our customers safe, make sure, follow who's regulations internally with our admin team. And I'm just happy to be part of that team and just be happy to report to the board that we are in full compliance, which we are part of a small elite group of transit folks throughout the industry who could say that, hey, we're a hundred percent compliant with the FDA. So I've been celebrating since May twelve.
She came back today.
Still celebrating for the whole year. I'm just ragging about to all my transit industry. I'm just ragging about to all my transit industry folks, and I'm just happy, and I just want to just share the news with you that we are 100% compliant with the FTA. So Sunny, Paula, Metrobus team, Dave, the folks that are here, and then Debbie's online. Congratulations to all of us. Job well done, and next three years, we'll be 120% compliant. I don't want to say 80%.
My standards are out of here.
Stick around, it might get worse. My apologies to any CPAs, but usually to get an audit, that usually an auditor will find something.
Yeah.
So that's, that's awesome, because I've gone through numerous audits in my career, and they always find something, always.
And you just think about COVID too, in the last three years, we had COVID, you know, we did a lot of things, ad hoc, we did a lot of lasting changes. You know, our focus at the time was to keep our customers safe, keep our employees safe, and we just made changes, just saying, okay, you know, this is our priority, this is our focus right now. And then the funding came in, and then we had more funding came in, so a lot of rules changed with the funding, and today we can do it this way, but tomorrow, by the way, new regular, new circular came out, we have to report this, you have to do that. So a lot of changes, so even with all the changes, we still no deficiency found. So that's a great testament to the Metrobus team. So real proud of each one of our Metrobus staff members. From cleaners to the fuelers, to the operators, to our admin team, to our exec team, all the way up to food chain. So really happy.
That's great.
I think I'll stop now because I see it's almost happy hours.
Don't in Louisville, probably is.
Any other thing else, anyone else, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Was it true?
All right, so no discussion. All in favor, say goodbye, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, we are adjourned at 4:54.